I'm uncomfortable with this discussion tonight. I'm uncomfortable with this entire investigation. I'm uncomfortable with the dissension in the town. I'm uncomfortable when residents come to the microphone in public interim and they disparage the mayor or they disparage employees regardless of what their issue is about. I'm uncomfortable that the mayor sounds emotional as she gives her talk tonight. I'm uncomfortable that her husband has probably been affected and probably her marriage and her family. I'm uncomfortable that we're sitting here tonight and we're going to review this investigation and we're essentially going to act as a judge or a jury, this is what we're supposed to do. We're not supposed to sit here and decide, "Do we like the mayor? Do we not like the mayor? Do we think she's a good person?" We shouldn't even be factoring in who the mayor is. It should be a matter of looking at accusations and deciding, "Are these accusations merited? And if they are, what's the ramifications, if any?" I'm further uncomfortable that if you sit on a jury and you hear the facts, you don't know the person, you don't really care who the person is, you listen to the facts, you listen to the attorneys, you make a decision, and you never see them again. Whatever decision we make here tonight, we're going to continue to sit on this council together and make some effort to work together. And almost nothing said, no decision that's made tonight is going to make that comfortable. I didn't just become concerned about these issues when I read about this investigation. I met with the town manager and the town attorney probably six weeks ago, and I said, "I'm concerned about the behavior of the residents when they come to our meetings. I'm concerned about what I'm hearing from people on the street." And they understood my concerns, and they said, "You know, we can't really get involved in politics. That's the council's job. Our job is to run the town." And they're exactly correct. I don't know what I expected when I met with them. I guess I didn't know who else to talk to. Then I went to two different council members. They can identify themselves if they choose to, and I met with them individually. And I said, "I don't like this. I don't like the decorum in these meetings." Not a matter with whether I agree or disagree, that's irrelevant. I don't like the decorum. I don't like the way things are conducted. Neither of them disagreed with me. Both chose to just stay silent, and I respect that. I frankly come to think I'm the only one that really doesn't like the way these meetings go. I've been in a public office most of my life. I've never seen anything like this. I reached out to the mayor, probably six weeks ago. I sent her a text, said, "I don't like what's going on. Would you have time to meet? I think I can help you." That's what I wrote in the text. I can actually read the text here, I still have them. She texted back, "That'd be great." I texted back, said, "I'd like to meet alone." She texts back, "My people have advised me not to meet with anybody alone." I texted back, and I said, "It's unfortunate we can't even meet as council members to have any sort of a discussion." I've served in half the elected offices in Arizona. As an elected official, it's like being in a club. When you call another elected official, they meet with you. I have never called another elected official, particularly in a body I sat in, and said, "Do you have time for a cup of coffee?", and had them say no, ever. When I was in the legislature, I met with Democrats, I met with Republicans, I met with a Democratic governor and a Republican governor. I never once was told, "Go talk to my staff." I was never told, "My people have told me not to meet with you." The path of dealing with this seems to be, "Let's ignore it. Let's just pretend there isn't a problem. Everybody in town's happy, it's all great. Do your business and stay out of my way." I don't like it, and I've done whatever I could to prevent it from getting to this point, but we're here. Now we have an investigation. We've got to analyze it, try to determine what the truth is, try to dig through the facts. As I was reading this last night, because I wanted to be familiar with it tonight, because no matter how much we want to brush this under the rug and forget about it, our job is to be aware of what these facts are. And as I was reading it, it reminded me of an experience when I was in graduate school. And I lived in graduate student housing. And the way the housing worked, you just got assigned the living quarters. You didn't pick your roommates. You met them after you moved in. And I had three other roommates. We weren't the same race, we weren't the same religion, we had very little in common other than we were all planning to go to medical school soon. After we moved in, I met my roommates, I learned that one of my roommates was dating a young lady who had a pig. I'd never really seen a pig up close prior to that, but the pig's about six feet long and maybe four feet in diameter. It looks like a big drainpipe you see on the side of the road with little short legs. And they would go over, and this pig came in her house, and it went in her backyard, and they took it to pig shows, and they did pig things. Whatever you do with pigs, that's what they did. And when he'd come back from cleaning the pig and walking the pig and whatever you do, he'd come back to our housing, and he smelled. It smelled kind of like, it wasn't manure, it was, I don't know, farm animal smell. I mean, you've probably all been around a cow. That's how it smelled. So he'd come back, and our living room would start to smell. And the three of us knew about it, we'd ignore it and pretend like we didn't smell it. We wouldn't say anything about it. That went on for a while, and then I had a lady I was dating at the time, and she says, "Why don't you come over to my house? Your house stinks." Well, I'm a young man, I want my girlfriend to come over to my house. So I got my roommates together that I barely knew, and I said, "You know, we need to go talk to Steve. We need to tell him something needs to change." And so we did. We sat down with him. We said, "After you go out with a pig and you come back, it smells." And he stepped up, and he said, "I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I'll try to do something about it." So the four of us agreed, and this is four people that don't know each other well, four of us agreed he'd take a shower after he came home from doing pig stuff, and he'd wash his clothes. And the reason I relate that story is because we pretended like we didn't know about it. We pretended like we didn't know there was a stink. We thought the best thing to do, let's just ignore it, until somebody else brought it up and said, "I'm sick of the stink." Then we had to do something about it. So as I go through this investigation, I know we just had a presentation here, 15 minutes or so to go over this. We spent a half an hour looking at a dozen houses on a 50-yard street, finding out where every window was and where the trees are going to go. I can't imagine that most of the people in the audience even know in detail what we're talking about. If you had read this 122-page report, you would know what we were talking about, but you probably know where every tree goes on that 50-yard street we just went over, because that's important. When I called this morning and asked, "Are we going to have a presentation at all?", the answer was, "I'm not planning on it." So when I got here, I didn't expect we were going to have a presentation, so I didn't prepare with a lot of questions, but I'm glad Mr. Cassidy is here, because I would like to ask a few questions so that I can understand the report before I make a decision. When I looked through the five complaints here, first one he talks about was some communications going with the mayor and the rest of us about some apartments in Morrison Ranch. And the mayor wasn't familiar with the status of the project. She needed to know what the status was, because some of the emails were talking about the application had been filed, the proposal had been filed, is what the report says. And she didn't know what had been filed, and she doesn't contact town employees on the weekend. When the mayor said she does not ever contact town employees on the weekend, did you look at any weekend emails, phone logs, communications of any sort to verify that's factual?
No.
Okay, so if we assume it's factual, the mayor doesn't ever contact employees on the weekends. Myself, I have sent texts on the weekends, I have sent emails, and many times I've gotten responses back. I don't pick up the phone and call anybody's cell phone, but I have communicated. Maybe she never has, it's possible. I guess we have to assume that she's telling the truth, and that she did. But since she doesn't communicate with any town employees ever on the weekend, rather than wait till Monday, we needed to respond to these emails immediately on Sunday, because there were constituents that had questions. The investigation says she wanted to act promptly. In some places, it sounds like the investigator is actually defending the mayor, but she needed to act promptly on Sunday morning, because she'd gotten a number of emails. So the best thing to do is to call Howard Morrison, the developer, the co-chair of her campaign, one of the largest donors to her campaign. As opposed to waiting until Monday morning, we call Howard Morrison. We get an update from Howard Morrison of what's going on, because of course, he would know, because he's an experienced developer. She relays the information Mr. Morrison gave her back to these constituents in a prompt matter on Sunday. She follows up with Mr. Morrison to let him know who the ringleader, who the troublemaker is on this project, so he knew who to contact, trying to facilitate a bridge to resolve this problem, is what it says. Gives him the name of the person, gives him a tally, how many people are supportive, how many are opposed, what their problems are. Now, one of the comments of one of the complainants is, "She gave him my name, she gave him my emails." One of the answers is, "Communication with a public official is a public document." That's true. Communication with an official or a public official or a government office is a public document. Normally, you obtain that through a Freedom of Information Act request. There's a reasonable assumption, as a constituent, when you call an elected official or email them, there's a reasonable assumption that that could become public information. But I would also assume that there's a reasonable assumption that the person I'm talking to would make some effort to maintain confidentiality. They wouldn't wait 10 minutes after my conversation and then go directly to the party I'm opposing and tell them everything I said, tell them my name, tell them how many people. That would be a reasonable assumption on my part, and it may be unreasonable. At our last meeting, the town manager wore, I think it was a blue suit he was wearing, looked like something from the '60s. Had I leaned over to Mr. Anderson and said, "Can you believe that jacket he's wearing", that's probably public information. But I reasonably would have assumed that he wouldn't have got up and immediately and run over to Patrick and said, "Hey, Lauren thinks that suit really looks like hell." Is that a reasonable assumption? Maybe it's not. Maybe I should have known, this is public information, and the first thing Mr. Anderson should do after I finish talking is go directly to him and tell him what I said. Exactly. So I question, I question the ethics in that decision, when the decision was made, to go directly to the co-chair of her campaign, one of her largest donors, and immediately share all this information. I have difficulty in thinking there wasn't any hope or intent that this might influence As I continue on through the investigation, and I hope I'm not boring everybody, I know most of the councils probably read this, studied it. I'm sharing my opinions, and I'm also somewhat sharing, people here stayed this long to see what we're talking about. I'm sure, and I agree with the person that refers to people as weak-minded when they make personal attacks. I've never made a single comment about the mayor ever, and I'm not tonight either. I'm looking at the facts as somebody who's given the job to evaluate this information and make a decision. At the end of the first complaint that we just talked about involving the Morrisons, it's this investigator's opinion, "Mayor Peterson exercised poor judgment in singling out a constituent as the most aggressive." Not an ethical violation, poor judgment. Our ethics code is very clear, sets a very low bar. It'd be very difficult to be unethical by the standards we set for ourselves. So we're using poor judgment as something less than an ethical violation. To use my analogy, this stinks. We can describe it however we want, it stinks. Not an ethical violation, but it smells. Another comment, in talking about the sign issue, was the sign at the right place, was it 23 feet, 25 feet, 27 feet, 28 feet? If it was 25 feet and 1 inch, it didn't follow the law. There's no need to make amends for, "Well, it was only two feet over," as the investigator has explained. It was only six inches over, it was only 10 feet over. It was over. The answer the mayor gave to the constituents is, "The developer will explain that, he's done it many times." Essentially, he's an expert, don't question him, he knows it all. She even sent an email to Howard Morrison, "I'm sure you followed the requirements. There isn't any doubt, you followed the requirements." Maybe I'd make the same assumption. I know the Morrisons have done a lot of development. It's probably reasonable to assume they do know, probably reasonable to assume they did follow the guidelines. The investigator finds, instead of requesting the town staff follow-up on constituent questions and concerns about the notice, Mayor Peterson replied explicitly, from the developer's experience, and told Mr. Morrison, "I'm sure you followed requirements." Mayor Peterson's failure to at least request town staff follow-up on the neighbor's concerns about notice was a lapse in judgment, in this investigator's opinion. I know that attorneys are trained to be wordsmiths. Their whole job is to know the English language or whatever language they're working in and carefully choose their words. Frankly, most attorneys can take either side of an argument and twist it into being believable that your client is right, and that's their job, that's what they do. I'm sure that when he used the phrase "lapse of judgment" as opposed to "poor judgment" on the first finding, the first one he's referring to judgment that was poor, and the second one, he's referring to a lapse being a complete lack of judgment in the second one. So we've got poor judgment and a lack of judgment, or lapse of judgment. If I'm misstating the facts here, Mr. Cassidy, please, please tell me. As we continue on, we come to confidential information. I talked about the confidential information. The investigator says Morrison Ranch residents had no reasonable expectation that their concerns about the proposed Morrison Ranch apartment complex would be treated as confidential. I agree, as I've said, just as my comments about our town manager's suit would not be confidential, but I would assume that my colleague wouldn't run directly to tell him what I'd said. Maybe it's a bad assumption. The town logo, Wheeler's Club Ethics Complaint, says, "The mayor has made it publicly known that she has disdain for the new logo." I have also. I didn't care for the logo when we picked it, still not excited about it, but that's what it is. Says that, "I believe she is fostering a toxic work environment with relation to the logo as a result of this disdain." Mayor Peterson provided a written rebuttal of many of these allegations, referring to the ones related to the logo and the Wheeler's Club, or whatever they call it. The mayor stated that she would not have considered Gamma as one of the top five people who worked on the logo. We've got seven members on this council. I couldn't tell you who the top three are, or the top five are, or the top 10 are, and I don't know how many people there are in this group that Gamma's not one of the top five. I cannot imagine sitting with someone and saying, "You're not even one of the top five. What do I care what you think? Why would I take it out on you? You're number six." Well, I wonder if there's more than six in this group. Are we saying this person, "You're number six, why don't you look for a job?" Now, we could say she didn't say that to him, but we've argued, or the investigator has argued, communication between elected officials are public documents. So how could you possibly think the employee wouldn't know he's not in the top five? Might not even be in the top 10. I question the thought process of a leader making a comment like that. I think that comes into our consideration in our discussion here tonight. Mayor Peterson claims to have heard from others, I'm reading from the report again, she claims to have heard from others that Gamma, the complainant, was boasting about spying on the group and reporting allegedly inappropriate posts to the Office of Digital We're talking about a website linked to a town site. How could you spy? And if you did discover inappropriate posts, what should you do? Ignore the stink? Don't talk about it? That's the mistake. He shouldn't have said anything. He shouldn't have looked and kept it quiet if he saw inappropriate behavior. That's the problem. He shouldn't have told anybody. Had he kept his mouth shut, he wouldn't have a problem. He might have been in the top five, but he didn't. He reported it. That's the problem. So we kick him out of the group. No more of that. Finding, Mayor Peterson made herself vulnerable to employee unequal treatment claims by being an administrator of a Facebook page linked on the Town of Gilbert's Employee Wellness Internet, carried on. I'm not even going to get into the misogynistic pictures that were on there that are going to be offensive to most women and men. I don't even want to talk about it. Poor judgment. So we got poor judgment, no judgment, poor judgment, poor judgment. The Public Comment Procedures Complaint. Frankly, I take this one somewhat personal. This is the one where we're going to modify our code to give the mayor control, to control speaking time, who's going to speak, if you could speak at all at a public hearing, tremendous amount of power. I pointed out during that meeting that even though the town attorney was given credit for it, and it's not correct, that the town attorney's name would be listed. The name is listed of the person that sponsored it and is responsible for it. I can see the investigator wouldn't have any way of knowing that, so I'm not criticizing his previous comment, but it's not true. The mayor admitted that she did ask the town attorney to draft this. Then she further went on to explain some staff members, some citizens, and a council member had brought it to her attention. To my surprise and shock, the council member was me. Imagine when I found this, how I felt, because I did send the mayor an email. I sent her an email because we had an employee that was disgruntled because he didn't get a promotion. And he came to the public meeting to criticize the employee that got the promotion. He went so far as to say he has to train him, because the employee isn't capable of doing the job that he was given. And I said, "I don't think this has a place at a public meeting. The employee should not be abused and criticized because he accepted a promotion, even if he didn't deserve it. What are you wanting him to do? Say, 'I don't deserve it? Give it to somebody else? Don't give me that job.'" Employees should not be subject to that criticism. My question that employees shouldn't be up to that kind of criticism, the mayor responded to my email. I'm not going to read the whole email. The last sentence of the email says, "I'd prefer to let the public be heard, that's really what they want, and if it makes them feel better, we and staff can take the comments." She didn't say, "Let me look into it further." She didn't say, "Let me get the town attorney to redraft our code so that I can take more control of the meeting, and I can control if applicants in a public hearing can speak at all." Didn't say that. She said, "I'd prefer to let the public be heard." What she wrote. She copied the town attorney, because when I sent the email to her, asking, "Is there any way to prevent this kind of behavior of employees criticizing each other?", I copied the town attorney. I got the email from the mayor the next morning at 8:54 in the morning. Okay. Now, I work, or I own, a legal services business. We create court documents, and we testify in court for attorneys. Every call that comes to my phone is recorded, all of them. I can get a transcript of it, I can look it up, I can produce it in court, whatever I want to do. After the mayor's email at 8:54, I got an email from the town, I got a call from the town attorney. There is a privilege communication, but the privilege protection is on the attorney's side. The privilege is mine. In that conversation, he called me, he said, "Lauren, I got your email, wanted to call you back." I'm not reading from a transcript, I don't have the transcript in front of me, but I spoke with the town attorney right before this meeting, and I told him what it says. He didn't dispute it. He says, "I don't remember the exact call, but I don't dispute it." In this call, when he called me, he said, "We don't have anything in the current town code to prevent an employee from doing what you're complaining about." He says, "I talked to the mayor this morning, I think she sent you an email already," which he knew for sure she did, because he was copied on the email that I just read from. So he had talked to the mayor prior to our conversation, and he had seen her email prior to our conversation. Prior meaning before he talked to me. Now, he's talking to me, he says, "There's nothing in the town code currently. I can research further in state statute if you'd like me to." Okay? The mayor has closed the matter, she talked to him earlier in the day, she emailed me, says, "I'd prefer let the public be heard." The town attorney then said, "If you don't want me to do anything further, I'm going to close this matter." Now, I don't have the transcript in front of me, but the exact words were, "Close this matter." Wasn't looking to it further, wasn't discussing with the mayor more. So the only way that my email of May 19th could have influenced the mayor's decision to redraft the code to give her all this power to control the meetings is during the next three months, I'm trying to give the mayor the assumption that she is being truthful, and these are facts. In order for it to be truthful, that my email that she responded to, and to the town attorney said he was closing, he's not working on it anymore, perhaps she was home a month later. And she says, "You know, Councilman Hendricks, he's pretty sharp. I really like that guy. I mean, he is on it. He knows what's going on. You know, he sent that email about six weeks ago, and I think we ought to dig that back up. And I ought to send that to the town attorney and tell him to take another look at that, because really, we should redraft this code, and we should give me more power to run the meetings." That's what Hendricks meant, and I don't want to forget about what he meant. When I said I thought it was fine, and when the attorney said he's closing the file, I've thought more about it. Every time I hear that guy talk, he is just dead on, "We have got to act on that email he sent." So she fires it over to the town attorney, three months later, and says, "Hey, we need to fix this up, because I've been thinking about Hendricks's email." Well, it's starting to stink some more. This stinks. This is not what happened. So what must have happened is something that happened at one of our meetings, perhaps when people show up with signs criticizing the mayor. There's nothing wrong with that. She could have just said, "I want to take control of the meeting," but she didn't. She wanted to lay it off on me, which I find personally offensive, because it had nothing to do with my email. My email was protecting the town staff. They do a phenomenal job. They shouldn't be abused, they shouldn't be told, "You're not in the top five." And they shouldn't be criticized by their coworkers who were overlooked for a promotion, period. You can call it unethical, call it, call it whatever you want, I don't care. Getting to the end, this investigator concludes that Mayor Peterson exercised poor judgment. He doesn't mention the lapse of judgment, the complete lack of judgment that he references earlier, but sure what he meant was poor judgment. Phones, Google it yourself. And I got a couple of definitions, just so we're clear what poor judgment is as opposed to unethical or lack of integrity or blatant mistruth. First one I read is probably a site that isn't going to be as respected by some, it's from a medical journal, about addiction help. Says, "Poor judgment is an impairment in the psychological recognition of normal, everyday activity which is caused by outside influences. Judgment and insight are vital parts of everyday life, while insight is the ability of..." of a person to gain an accurate and deep understanding of an object or someone. The thoughts of someone suffering from poor judgment do not match up with reality. Statistics have shown that 50% of people suffering from judgment issues do not believe that they suffer from any impairment or that they have a problem at all." That's from a medical journal. If you don't like a medical journal, especially one called Addiction Helper, I found another one. The Harvard Business Journal. Most people have heard of Harvard, most people are respectful, find it respectful. Judgment. "The ability to combine personal qualities with relevant knowledge and experience to form opinions and make decisions is the core of exemplary leadership. It is what enables a sound choice in the absence of clear-cut, relevant data or an obvious path. To some degree, we are all capable of forming views and interpreting evidence. What we need, of course, is good judgment." I'm not an expert on Harvard, but that's the Harvard Business Journal. The next one's the Harvard Business Review. This one applies more directly to what we're doing right now. "A leader's most important role in any organization is making good judgments, well-informed, wise decisions that produce the desired outcomes. When he or she shows poor judgment, nothing else matters. All is lost." These are not my words. Mr. Cassidy used the word "poor judgment." All I'm doing is respecting his ability as a wordsmith, and reading the definition of the words he used. Last one is an article again from the Harvard Business Journal. Talks about former Hewlett Packard CEO Carly Fiorina. She had a vision, was not afraid to make decisions, but she repeatedly showed poor judgment when it came to people, paying inadequate attention to the challenges of preparation and execution. So she couldn't make it through the execution phase, and a judgment that is not successfully executed is a failed judgment. Now, the reason I say this one applies more to this council than these mere definitions, which could be somebody's ramblings, this article is about 15 pages long or so, and I'm not going to bore you by reading the whole thing, but it talks about the failures of Carly Fiorina when she was the CEO of Hewlett Packard. She nearly bankrupted the company. Actually, she may have bankrupted the company, I don't know the history well enough. But as the Harvard Business Journal reviews her time and her experience, talks about the board that supervises her, the board that hired her. "A flawed judgment process was not the sole cause of Fiorina's downfall and failure. Hewlett Packard's board showed poor judgment in hiring Fiorina for a job for which she was ill-suited, and failing to hold her accountable for her actions." What we have is dissension and distrust in the community. It didn't start tonight, probably started about two months ago, when I first started having these meetings that I described earlier, when I reached out to everybody I could reach out to, including the mayor, saying, "This is not good. We need to fix it, we need to do something about it." And so far, it's fallen on deaf ears. And it may well fall on deaf ears again tonight. I may be the only person here to stand up and speak, and I guess so be it. Last thing I want to comment from is, I looked up how do you fix poor judgment? And we can ignore it, we cannot fix it at all, we can decide it doesn't exist. But it gives six steps. This is from the Melius Group. They do analytics and research, largely for industry. Gives six points to work on. Be aware of your own personal bias. Consider opposite points of view that may be relevant. Accept your own mistakes and take accountability. Learn from experience. Avoid flip-flopping and excuses. Those are the main ones. When I listened to the mayor's comments, I heard, "I'm sorry." I heard people misinterpreted my comments. I heard, "I've worked hard." "I've worked a long time." I think she does work hard. I think she's worked a long time. I don't think she intended to have poor judgment. And I think she is sorry, and probably wishes these things didn't happen, and probably wishes we weren't here tonight. When I reached out to the manager, to the town attorney, the two council members, they can choose to identify themselves or not, I didn't reach out to them and say, "Let's go persecute the mayor." I didn't say, "Let's hold her accountable." I said, "We need to find a way to help. We need to find a way to help her, she's in a bad spot, and people are attacking her at the meetings and all around town." I am comfortable, I did everything I could to help prevent the problem, to help with the problem once it started, and I continue to feel the same way. But to turn your head and say, "There isn't a problem, and this doesn't stink," if that's what we choose to do tonight, good luck. If anybody else wants to talk, I think I've probably said more than enough. Don't be smiling, Mr. Anderson.
Who would like to speak next? Councilmember Yentes, would you like to speak?